I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Three, seven, two, roll, please.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Woslaw.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
And Jassa's absent with notice.
All right, do we have any additions or approval of the agenda? Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, do we have a motion to approve the events from the three, seven, twenty-three meeting?
Make motion to approve minutes, five, three, seven?
Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Woslaw?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion to approve the bills for payment as submitted. I have one. Nissan Altima, that's...
That's the vehicle that basically Kyle drives back to work.
Oh, okay.
And then issue with the shifter.
Gotcha.
He already knows.
I see it was eleven hundred and sixty bucks, so...
I know, crazy.
Yeah.
However, if it is a...
Yeah, must be. Shifter, good. Any other discussion on the bills? If not, we'll vote. Woslaw?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Public comment time. Anybody that has any, anything to say that's not on the agenda? Not you. It's not the weather report? No? All right. We'll move down to applications, agreements, hearings, resolutions, ordinances. First up, special permit for miles for Murphy. Please state your name.
Alexa Larson.
We know who you are, yeah. The information's in the packet. Give us a little rundown, will you, Alexa?
So, our National Honor Society worked with the Murphy family and selected a date that worked for everyone, and we selected April 29th. And yeah, we're just looking for approval of our permit that we submitted.
All right. Same as you've done in the past?
Yep.
Looks like the map's the same.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any questions or action from the council?
Motion to approve special event application miles for Murphy, five K as presented.
One second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Woslaw?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Alexa. Dog park update or anything? No? No dog park update?
No, just waiting for the snow to melt.
There you go.
For real.
All right, next item is Resolution 2023-4, authorizing application for an SRF loan for our Highway 38 Waterloo. Staff recommendation is approved. Theresa, anything to add?
Nothing really to add, just a recap for our Highway 38 Waterloo project. You know, we talked about the funding, I thought we're going to take five hundred thousand out of our water fund reserves, and then the balance, which is just under five hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety, eight hundred, we decided to apply for an SRF loan. So basically, this resolution states we're applying for the SRF loan, it allows the mayor or the council president to sign the paperwork on behalf of them.
Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-4, authorizing application for SRF funding for Highway 38 Waterloo project as presented.
One second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brennaman?
Yep.
Matson?
Yes.
Woslaw?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
All right. Next up, twenty twenty... Excuse me. Twenty twenty-three dash five, transfer of reserve funds from the water fund to the Highway 38 Loop Project. As aforementioned, this is also marked for approval. That was a couple weeks ago, sorry.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-5, transfer of reserve funds from the water fund to the Highway 38 Waterloo Project Fund as presented.
Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Woslaw?
Yes.
All right. Next up, first reading of ordinance 739, which is to update our fines and fees. We did a couple things, and with our change in our swimming pool pass, we needed to update our ordinances. It's as attached. Do you want to just give the quick rundown, Theresa, what ones were changed?
So the changes are highlighted in right there. Basically, I went in, since we changed our fees for our swimming pool passes, going in to change it on our ordinance here. I had marked the last time we updated this. I had noticed we didn't have in there the fines for violation of a golf cart, you know? Didn't have the amount in there for the golf cart permit, and I didn't have the fine amount for a golf cart violation. It's in the ordinance, so we could write a fine on it, but it just wasn't in this document, so I added them as well, just to update it all around. Those are the two changes.
I'd make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 739, update fines and fees.
Any discussion?
Do you think that twenty dollars is still covering the overhead essentially that the city carries for handling all the golf carts, golf cart permits?
I didn't think it covered it at the beginning, but that's kind of what we settled on.
Because we were, weren't we, like, five, right?
We were five.
And then we went to twenty a couple years ago, or is it?
Three.
Three years, man.
It's been a little while, yeah, it's been a little while. And we've been at that ten dollars for a while.
Just for reference, the state seal that is approved to put on your license plate is twenty-five bucks.
And it must have been...
And you need two. If you got two license plates, you should get two. So, anyway, that's something we should...
Yeah, we were at five, and that was not covering the cost.
Oh, right.
It wasn't even the cost of getting the stickers, also busykill, so we went up to the twenty, and we have about sixteen. Probably just covering our costs for recalls now.
And twenty.
Yeah.
Got it. All right. Yeah, that's something we should probably look at, and we have some other items that we're going to make adjustments to. First item, we should probably look at that.
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the fines and fees, if they haven't been updated for five years, we should probably be thinking about it.
And we did review this document a year ago, and so we did do some updating of that, except that one got missed, so...
All right.
Yeah, we can look at this next year.
Any more questions or discussions on this one? If not, we'll vote. Woslaw?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Next one up, updated voting wards. We need to review and approve the map, and then we need to have first reading of 740.
Yeah, so with the newly annexed land coming in, you know, the county keeps a database of, you know, voting wards, they are, so we've got to designate the new land into a voting ward. Right now, we don't have anybody actually living in any of the new lands, so I mean, it doesn't change our numbers, but for CCOG, and there's a map in your packet that shows where we're, you know, going to throw them. Basically, we're kind of just where they're closest, where they fit at, since there isn't no voting, actual people living there voting yet, the numbers don't matter, but this is something we will review annually, and we've got to make sure our numbers don't get out of whack. So we'll look at the population numbers each year, and if we need to make any changes, we can at this time, but at this point, we're just designating them in a ward, so we can send that to the county, so they can put it in their database. We've got to approve the map, which is in your packet, and then the next part of it is approving first reading of ordinance 740, and that's basically just the verbiage that's in our ordinance, so they go together hand in hand. The ordinance refers to the map, so we've got to approve the map first.
All right, we need two separate actions then?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the voting ward map.
All second. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Woslaw?
Yes.
All right, and we'll need action on ordinance, ordinance 740.
Motion to approve ordinance 740 as presented.
Can you fix the typo?
What typo did you find?
She's got north or south side of Second Street, and Ward Two should be Ward Three, according to that.
So what paragraph are you looking at, Mayor?
Your background summary.
On my background summary? Oh, not in the actual ordinance, so there's a typo, right?
No, no, just in your description.
Okay, that's a big thing I'm worried about, if there was a typo in the ordinance, so...
The ordinance is correct. The ordinance says, what was the... North of Second Street, correct?
Yes.
That is correct, right?
The ordinance says last time, north of Second Street, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we're actually, that's what we're going with.
Right.
All right? Have we had a second?
No.
All right, any further discussion on that? Not, we'll vote. Woslaw?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. That brings us down to reports. First up, fire and rescue report. Looks like Chief Bryan's here, we'll have you do this one first, and we got you guys later on down the line.
Good evening, councilors, mayor. Just kind of update what you guys already have in your package, twenty-seven calls in February, thirteen of those in the city of Hartford. Again, continues to be a very busy year. Train wise, we did patient assessment last night on EMS, side fire. Tomorrow night, we have roles and responsibilities, accountability, and rapid intervention crew training. We've also done a department-wide SCBA maintenance and post-call quick on there. The other part I wanted to touch on, it's that season of the year kicking in again. No, not spring construction. So, we were officially notified, and I'm sure you guys have already, I-90 construction officially kicked off on Monday, slated to go through November 30th. Westbound lanes being torn up, eastbound being head-to-head conversion in a couple weeks here, weather permitting, so... And with that, we put some automatic aid in place, just based on accessibility out there, but what it also might bring, some added traffic through town. Highway 38, possibly Nicholson, Western Avenue, and things like that, we just need to be aware of and keep up with, so... Well, that's really all I have for you at this juncture tonight, with more coming later here, so...
Any questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, Chamber Economic Development Director, Amy M.
R.
R.
Just making sure you're talking about me. So, on the chamber side, I have a lot of my information in the packet, but I want to just touch on three things. So, April 4th is the membership mixer at the Hartford Spinal Care, 5:30 to 6:30. We're gearing up for Discover Hartford, which is May 1st with a six. The mobile app this year is taking place of any scavenger hunt forms, so there's no forms out there, you have to do the whole trivia scavenger hunt through the mobile app. With that, hearts will also be placed out again, the golden hearts. Hopefully, snow is gone, so we have a better way to hide them and make people find them. And then the last thing for the chamber, this year, we are doing something right now that launched, it's a Easter egg hunt through the app, it's to drive more traffic to the app. So on different photos, there's a small little Easter egg you have to find, and then you fill that out on the app, and then it sends me the answers, and then you'll be in for a drawing of twenty-five dollar Hartford bucks, so that is quite the fun opportunity to learn our app, if you may say so myself. On the development foundation side, the governor's office of economic development did a video of Hartford, probably back in, oh gosh, August, September timeframe, and they are in the review stage, I sent it out to the board members to have them review it along with the storyline, so once that's approved by our board, then we'll go back to GOED and tell them to go ahead and run that. Met with prospects last week, and then early this week for some different projects, and just continue to meet with different folks when they want to come and learn about Hartford. Any questions?
Are you going to do any press releases for the land that HAD purchased?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Are you going to do any press releases for the land that the HAD have purchased, or...
It hasn't been discussed, we certainly can. I think a majority of that has been going through the broker that we use on her website or their website, but I mean, it doesn't hurt to do a press release. Is it a good idea?
Just a thought, yeah.
Yeah, I can bring it up to the board tomorrow morning.
Although, I would say without question, that's never happened before. Us, I'm totally spaced and something.
I think we've ever had, HAD has had land to do a press release on.
Right.
But no, that doesn't hurt at all, I'll bring it to the board tomorrow morning, thank you.
Unprecedented.
What?
Unprecedented. Press.
All right, any questions for Amy, or anything additional, Amy?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. ISG, Michael?
Good evening, everyone. A few updates tonight. Water tower painting, I believe I previously told you they anticipated in May timeline to apply the logo to the tower, they have since changed that to June, just for their scheduling and then the way the weather's painting. There, we did have...
We are going to get it painted, right?
Yes, we will.
Okay. You can't blame it on the snow, though.
No, there shouldn't be any snow. But there is a caveat to that change, or that one with the logo, so they do have to do it by, I believe it's the 5th of July, so they're about it at the end, that they're doing it. We did discuss that last week, and have one question for council, just wanted to confirm with you, so the live lively logo is the one that's going on the tower. And the question we had, or just wanted to discuss, is would you like that logo facing directly south, kind of basically, you know, in line with Western Ave, or do you kind of want it more angled, you know, facing more of the bulk of the city?
South or southeast?
Yeah.
Right, I do. Yeah, do it south.
Last one is straight south.
Yeah, a reference.
Straight south.
Yeah, so...
Straight south, yeah.
Any difference?
Is there any question? That's why we brought it up to you guys.
Yep.
We didn't want to put it in the wrong spot.
It's going to be hard to pick.
That'd be easier, if you put it in the wrong spot. Do it right, do it twice, right?
Because if you guys want to sit and think about it, don't be a silly answer, and I have for not going to paint until June, but just something you consider.
Do we really need to think about it? And does anyone have a preference, is my question?
I do not.
I do not either. That's what I mean, you hear me. Happy to take your recommendation.
Just want to make sure you don't, so we don't pick the wrong one.
Right. I would think we just have to face straight south, right? That makes the most sense.
Straight south.
You can't see it coming, I was, if you look at it on a map aerial, from an aerial, it looks like you can see it as you're coming into town on 30th Chain. No, because it's set at that, because of there's trees, and you really have to, by the time you can see it, then the trees are in the way again, so...
Yeah, probably straight south.
Perfect. Gives it the most visibility.
Okay?
Easy enough, I will let them know. On the water resource recovery facility, as previously discussed, Riceley will be finalizing the cost model, end of this month, and presenting that at the April 4th meeting. With how that goes, the council's decision, then there's two different schedules. So, the first, as outlined in the report, is if the city accepts the cost model that is presented on the 31st, we use the month of April and half of May to finalize drawings, prepare for the GMP, and review proposals at the end of May, and then bid that and go through contracts through mid-June, and then break around end of June. However, if costs come back on the 4th, and the city is not comfortable with them, and you instruct us to revisit some of the cost-saving procedures and items that we have, that schedule pushes it back by about a month. So, if that's the case, then we take the month of April to then revisit, really go back through Riceley, see if there's any additional places we can cut, present that at the 5-2 council meeting, and then the same process on a similar timeline, just shift it a month. So, month of May, halfway to June, finalizing drawings, council update the second meeting in June, and then work through contracts through mid-July, and then break around end of July, or shortly after those contracts are finalized. So, nothing you guys need to do with that tonight, I just wanted to provide an update on proposed schedules. Any questions on those, any concerns? I can break up to the team.
And like Michael said, Riceley will be here at our next meeting to go through that with you, so...
It'd be good if we could have everybody here that night, because that'll be a...
Yeah, a big decision.
Yeah, that's going to be a big decision.
All right. Just wanted to get that to you. As Theresa mentioned on the Highway 38 water main extension, we'll be submitting that on application at the end of the month. We're working with CCOG to finalize some of those documents for that funding application packet, and then we'll plan to submit that next week in time for that submission deadline. I did reach out to SOCP then on storm shelter, and FEMA has not responded, so unlikely that they have made a determination at this point. Once they actually get their ducks in a row and know what they want, then they're going to be able to reach out until then, it's better radio silence, so...
They've had a busy winter.
Yeah, mm-hmm, for sure. And then, on the bike interaction real quick, we've submitted a, updated layout and cost estimates of the city for you to go through with game fishing parks, so we can get going through on that.
I did ask Justin for a revised estimate going to an eight-foot trail, so...
I'm sorry, I got that to Justin, just an easier review than that one.
Yes.
That's what we're... So, that'll be coming shortly.
One more cost estimate, and then once I get that, we'll just send it to the GFP and let them review it, and hopefully they'll let us move ahead.
This is moving to the other side?
Staying on the same side, just...
Renewing the width from...
Producing it.
Okay, same side of the crack.
Correct, north side.
North side of the crack.
Yeah, staying north side. To get away from having to get an easement, we're going to have to do additional retaining wall, you know, there's a couple retaining walls in there now, so it's going to bump cost estimates up some with that, so I asked if ISG could look at, it sounds like the GFP will let us go from a 10-foot trail to an eight, so I asked them to narrow it down a little, see if we get any cost savings there, so...
Is the homeowner aware that we're going for the trail there?
I left a message for, I actually called her today, tried to call her, and left a message, let her know, just to give her a, told her I wanted to talk to her in person, just to let her know kind of what the plan was, and what we're doing, and how we're moving ahead, so I'm hoping she comes back.
Because we kind of thought if she knew, it was going there regardless.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if she understood.
Hopefully, I'll hear back from you soon, so...
That is all I have for you guys tonight, any questions?
Has there been any discussion on Kelly's proposal with the bump outs? Have you guys had any talks on that, Craig?
I haven't talked to her in a while, no.
Justin did send Kelly some material on bump outs and the end design of that, so she has what she needs, and they have been working on it.
Because really, we're doing some research now before that, right?
Yeah, she's going to come back with a plan, yeah.
We just gave that approval to do some research.
Just to do some research, and come up with a plan of what she'd like to do, and then she's going to come back to the council for your final approval or not, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Michael?
Thank you.
We're going to start being inter... He keeps coming back. Where's Doc's at? We'll get him here. All right, thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Craig?
Just a couple changes in my report. We did get samples back for TSS New Eastern Lagoons, Molyneep, and both ponds, two and three, came back good, so we are discharging, we got permission from Tom Anderson at Danard yesterday to go ahead and discharge, so we have started that. Probably take a couple weeks, and we should be well down where, probably to the ice level, you know, where the ice is going to be down, so...
Yeah.
Got that going, and then just in the parks, we did start on the bathrooms, we are going through both the ones at Turtle Creek and the main ones. The main one, we're, both were redoing the floors, going to repaint them all, get them all dressed up, and then there's going to be new panels put in the one in Lions Park, so we're renovating them, getting those all cleaned up for something changed, so... That's all I got from my report, and I got some action items. I start with, I think, library, yeah. So, Gage House, I got ahold of a couple different, basically, I went to HVAC guys and talked to a couple, one of them, I guess, two of them actually, and to get prices, told them that sense electrical is so minimal in it, that I wanted them to find their own electric contractor, and just have one guy go up there, I'd just be working with one guy. We only got one quote back, and that was from A1. And I've got a list of the stuff that I put down for, that need to get done and changed in there. So, I got their quote there, and then I put together a list of materials that I figured is going to take, as long as we won't have any unperceived things, we will, that's the number on that, so I think the total, total is 21, eight, seven, three, fifty is what I came up with. Like I said, could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more, so...
Is that shoring up the...
This would be putting that wall in to make the library bigger, where you take an auto wall and putting a header in that, build another, taking out those bifolds, or those French doors they got in that one area?
Yeah.
And putting a rear door walk-in door there, so that they can lock their side, and then we put in a little IT closet with that door and stuff, so that's pretty much. And then, the big stuff is a heater, an AC, because there's quite a bit of difference in temperature between the two sides, AC, so that's why I wanted to put two different heat zones in there, basically.
And you asked the local, all the local guys to give you a price on the HVAC?
Anybody can think of, yeah, I only got a couple that are really, are big enough, I guess, to...
Yeah. All right. So we need a motion probably to move forward with that project?
That's pretty much, and then the big stuff is a heater and AC, because there's quite a bit of difference in the temperature between the two sides. So that's why I wanted to put two different heat zones in there, basically.
Can you ask the local, all the local guys to give you a price on the HVAC?
Anybody can think of, yeah, I only have a couple of them down there. That are really, are big enough, I guess, to...
Yeah. All right. So we need a motion probably to move forward with that project? Where's that total value figure, am I guessing?
Twenty-eight or two.
So we're just approving that?
Oh, okay.
To do those renovations.
We're looking to start our...
Just start work, yeah.
Yeah, we'd, we'd actually probably start tomorrow, sort of getting in there, doing stuff on it.
So twenty-six thirteen and the nineteen thousand and something, twenty-one thousand and something, is that correct?
Yeah, twenty-one eight. So, that's, like I said, as long as we don't run into anything, then when we start getting into it, you know, we gotta look...
Yeah.
If falls ceiling up, we can see where we're at inside there, so.
And does that take care, I think I was trying to ask, down in the basement, or are we doing some?
That's been done.
That's done?
Yeah.
That's not in this?
No.
Done?
Yeah, that's been done.
Gotcha. Okay.
We knew we had to do that anyway before the...
Right, right, right.
So...
Yeah, we don't want the floor to fall. Make motion to approve. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Mattson? Loslaw? All right, we're gonna be going on that tomorrow, right, Craig?
Yeah, we're gonna start on it, get more on some.
If you're not up while it's known.
Yeah, I will leave at this time.
Yeah. All right.
Uh, next thing is the utility John Deere heater. This price is from just one contractor, but they're all through Sourcewell. Uh, we get a price, we talked to another guy. Pifers out of Sioux Falls, they're actually getting out of John Deere, so they didn't want to get priced, but they said it'll be the same price as anybody else. So basically, you're picking who you want to deal with, and we've done a lot of stuff with over Madison and Kibble, so. And that is below what we have for a budget too, so.
Motion to approve purchase of a John Deere heater utility vehicle from Kibble Equipment House presented.
Second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote Brennan. Yes, Mattson.
Yes.
Loslaw? Yes. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Last item is Snory Seal project. I talked to Raleigh with Sioux Falls. Askle was low bid at the end of this year. I asked him what he thought, and he said basically that last year, toward the end of the year, he said they were coming along pretty good and doing some pretty good work. He said he has been at quite a few different training classes and that stuff on Snory Seal, and he said the Askles had a group of guys there every time. Their equipment, they had the manufacturer, the main company, the sales company, come down in this splitter and went through both their rigs, so, laid-out machines, so. He says mechanically, they should be in good shape, and he said, I think in as far as, as long as they have somebody running the crews, he goes, I think they should be doing pretty good. Sioux Falls did approve their quotes or bids, they just are waiting to get the contract signed, so.
Did we get everything fixed last year that we need fixed?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, yeah. Really, I looked at the roads they did this year, or last year. We did scrape off a few of the rocks on top, which was kind of the rough stuff anyway.
Right.
Um, I didn't see anything that got peeled or anything like that, so it actually adhered and stayed down, so. It should be a little smoother even this year.
All right.
But I, I feel pretty comfortable that the product was there, and it was, it's holding up, it's just cosmetic that, you know, something was rough. I think they'll, they'll finish.
So that mean we wanna be done in the fall next year, so they're a little better?
Sioux Falls has it in their contract this year that they have to do at least fifty percent of Sioux Falls before they can move to a small town. He said, he said that way, we hopefully have all the bugs worked out, and then, because last year, they came hard for about three different days and they actually got frustrated and left, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So, they want, they're gonna make them do fifty percent in Sioux Falls before they move into any small towns, just to, just to make sure it's working good and make sure the crew people know what they're doing, so.
Sioux Falls probably have somebody...
They'll have, they'll have a couple guys right there on them all the time.
Then, unrelated, what about the ground road treatment?
That'll be coming up here.
That's later on?
Yeah, I'll get prices for that, and then for the Meg water, and then...
Yeah, Meg water.
And then also for crack sealing, stuff like that, so we can get one of that stuff this spring, so.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Snory Seal man?
Second. Any more discussion? There are none, we'll vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Loslaw?
Yes.
All right.
That's all I have, unless somebody has any questions or something for me, I guess.
All right.
Well, thank you.
That. Ms. Karen?
My report's in the package. I did wanna add that with the election, we're having a change. We're gonna hold it over at the senior center, since we now own that building, so we don't have the traffic through City Hall here, so. That notice, I have to publish that there will be an election, of course, that'll be in there and everything, so, just an update on that.
Remodel, repairs won't affect that?
Our plan is over there is, we're actually gonna build the wall between the two halves and then get that side done, taped, painted, so that way we can work over there without interrupting them and them not interrupting us, so. So that side will be wrapped up anyway.
Um, speaking of the election, do we, I'm assuming we publish a map in the paper so people know where to, who's all in?
We've not done that.
It's on our website.
It's on the website?
Yeah, and we'll throw out, like she said, she has to get a notice in paper, and we put that on our website, and we'll throw it on our Facebook to remind them, yeah.
Okay.
Come to the website through Facebook, so.
Okay.
Get the word out there.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Karen?
No, that's it.
She still got, she's still got brackets around numbers there, you didn't notice that, or, I don't know what she's doing that for.
Does the decrease in the state sales tax affect on the food and beverage, does that affect what our tax?
No, that's just the state share. The municipal tax didn't change, so, we still get our share.
All right. Enough, thank you, Karen. Theresa, anything to add to yours?
Um, just a couple little updates. DSU is doing their cyber analysis right now on the city. They've expect that to be completed either by the end of this week or beginning of next week, and then we'll get a report to see how we done it. If there's anything we need to update or change or secure better, so, we'll get that. Um, and then just a higher update. Me and Craig did interview, we had three candidates this year, which is surprising for the duck monitor, before we were trying to fake somebody, but we ended up, we hired Jerry McCall to, to work ours. He's retired gentleman, so he'll be able to, to work all the hours, hopefully. Um, if something comes up and he can't, we have Russ Loslaw again, he helped in the past fill in where is needed, and he's willing to do that again as well, so. We should have the, the dump site covered. It's supposed to open the first Saturday of April, April first, so we'll see. If there's snow or not there, we're opening it, but that's the anticipated date. Yeah, it might be cold, might be snowy, but that's the anticipated date, so. And then the only other thing is just wanna kind of give you an update. If you noticed in my report, the landfills passes for the Sioux Falls landfill this year, we got noticed that they are going digital, so. Uh, the passes we used to hand out at City Hall, we don't need to do that anymore. You know, the application said you can apply for a maximum of five hundred passes. Actually, with them changing systems, I asked, was it first five hundred come in, or how does that work or whatnot? They will actually allow one pass for every resident in the city, so we're actually getting more passes than, than what we previously received.
Pass for every resident, or one pass for every...
For every household, every address, it's gonna be, they have to bring in their driver's license or a photo ID with their address, and that's what the landfill will scan.
Okay.
They'll let them dump it if they're first come through. Somebody tries to come through with a second one again, they'll get turned away.
Sure.
But, um, so like I said, we don't have to do anything on our end anymore. And, and they extended their timeframe too. They'll start here, the, I think it's the first Monday, what is it, the third in April? And you can go all the way through to the end of the year, where they used to cut it off in September, so. So, yeah, so it's kind of a benefit.
They have to show their driver's license.
Your driver's license. They'll scan the barcode, the gal said they got a new system that scans the barcode. So then the address pops up and they, I don't know how they picked out the city addresses, but, yeah.
Hopefully people have their driver's license updated.
Yeah, and they were supposed to have them when they brought the pass as well, before, so. Hopefully they have it, yes.
It's harder to get a new driver's license than it is a dump pass.
Exactly. I was gonna say, they wanna make sure the driver's license is updated though, if they recently moved, because they get a dump pass. Yeah, so, it's kind of a, kind of a better benefit that way, so.
All right.
Yeah, something like that.
Any questions for Theresa? Yeah, thank you. We're gonna move on to old business. First, we're gonna talk about the fire department, their request for allocated twenty-twenty-three operating funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This was previously budgeted. And I figure we'll talk about this first, and then we're gonna have a little discussion about the fire trucks.
Motion to approve our community fire rescue request to release their twenty-twenty-three operating budget allocation of thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Loslaw?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Brennan?
No.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Gives us four, we passed. All right. Got a couple gentlemen here from their truck committee, plus the chief, plus Mr. Bus, I see rolled in. We wanna have a little discussion about your truck. You guys wanna step on up and, uh... Did you get this back?
Uh, finally this morning.
Who wants it first? Well, Braden.
I'm Bryce.
I guess we kinda headed up the truck committee, we were starting about a year ago, so.
So this truck, so in January twenty-two, the board met, took recommendations from our previous business meeting to start coming up with what replacement engine we needed. There were six members on this committee, and we reached out to Gary from Crimson, and then Brian from Hyden, who just be there to ask questions. So then in February twenty-two, the committee met and started doing research. We went to look at a lot of trucks, trying to get an ideas of what we wanted, and just researching what the department really needed. So then in January, so January twenty-three, we received three quotes. Then we ended up presenting the quotes to the board, not the board, but to the, yeah, we presented to the board, and then we went to the committee, the membership, and that voted on. So, just some stuff on the trucks, where we're at today and where we need to go. Is the fire is already, first and, first do an engine, should be fifteen years old or less. Our current engine is going up on fifteen years. Some of our issues is there's not enough room for all the equipment in there. Our biggest problem right now is extrication. Our extrications are getting more complicated, and we're having to add more equipment. Right now, you open a lot of our door, doors, and the compartments are packed full, and we have no room for new equipment. We have an open pump handle, and pump is, it's a crosswalk pump, so you're up in the weather. It's a twelve-hundred GPM pump. Um, it has no, it has a front bumper, but no front suction. It's a five-man cab. Without cab, in an international style or freightliner, the one we have currently is international. There's not enough, a lot of room for the guys in the backseat, you know, like me and Ray back there.
You have five big, bigger guys in there, it gets to be tight to open it back on, nothing, nothing we haven't been dealing with for the last thirteen or fourteen years, but... We could change that on our, on the design for the new one. Sorry, I don't bring you over, over, uh...
And we have no light power on the current engine, so that makes later, I assume, you know, we gotta take more time to set up. Portable lights versus one big scene, I can put up to, especially for three accidents. So, the new truck, call responses is kind of a good idea. It'll be, obviously, any kind of fires, car accidents, extrications. Yeah, it'll be kind of a backup EMS truck, we'll have enough EMS equipment on it. Water rescues, gas leaks, you know, if we have a very big rescue, the truck can be going out to it. So, this new truck that we came up with, um, it's a custom cab, a clean compartment, um, four EMS gears. So today, right now, the EMS gear goes in the back compartment. We'll have to put a lot of our stuff in bags, because compartments, we can't get them a hundred percent dust proof. So, with the new one, it will be, the reason why we want a custom cab is because there's an apartment in there, so it's climate-controlled, and all of our EMS equipment is in a, you know, dry sealed compartment.
Another thing that we liked about the custom cab was, we, you can fit another person in there, so that helps just from five to six. And then one of the major things that pushed us towards that decision as well was, uh, so since your cab is over top of your engine, it's pushing the cab another five foot forward roughly, so that gives us space for another compartment to help kinda give us some more storage, so we can continue to, give us some growth for the future. We haven't really been able to predict where we're at now, nobody could have really predicted the growth we've had in the last three to four years. It's gone up quite a bit, and we just wanna, our big thing was trying to make sure that, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road, we're not in the exact same spot we're at now, where it's like, you open up the compartments and they're ready for you. We wanna make sure it's efficient down the road, so.
So, um, the new truck will have a fifteen-hundred gallon pump, with a thousand gallons of water. Um, twenty-four inch deep compartments on both sides of this truck. That was a big must for us, just to make sure we have the room for new equipment coming in. The ladder storage. Side of the pump handle, so our pump handle, it'll be all enclosed, so it's not open to the weather elements, so when we're going to a call, everything's not getting full of snow or dirt. So you just open up the doors, don't get dirty, and then everything that's in that pump handle is clean. We're going to a front suction, so we'll have a side suction and a front suction. The reason we want to have a front suction on this truck is to know how roads, if we're out using a drop tank and drafting. Right now, we have to set that drop tank next to the truck. It takes up a nub lane, so it's only one way in, one way out. Um, by going with a front bumper suction in front of the drop tank, in front of the truck, trucks can, tenders can come up to the side, dump the water, keep going, so we're not sitting here trying to turn traffic around and keep traffic moving. So on this truck, we will have three inch and a half pre-connects that are at two hundred feet. One, or two of them will be at two hundred feet, one will be at a hundred and fifty feet. Um, these pre-connects, we obviously use for making entry, and then the rapid intervention team will have pre-connect on there, so they have their own line. We'll have two, two and a half pre-connects at two hundred feet, a deck gun, a light tower, and a generator.
So with this, with this truck, with your existing ladder rig, and with your EMS trucks, how do you feel you will be situated, drop-wise?
We added this truck in and moved it open, and one with all the issues that we're having with it, I think it's gonna set us up for the future, go down the road.
I mean, I feel we still have, just like any, just like I'm sure the city has too, we'll have assets that obviously will need to be replaced again in the future, but...
Were the issues just room? Or did you have major issues?
Uh, issues is room.
We haven't had any major issues.
The pump, we ended up putting probably fifteen hundred, two hundred a year in that pump. Just valves and just stuff going wrong in it lately.
It's not a, I mean, by no means is it a bad truck. It's still a great, great truck.
Cause even no one's bragging.
Oh, I know, but... We're still getting the job done, but it's just, we're trying to quiver future growth.
Yeah. It's getting older, and it's just taking more maintenance to keep it going.
What do you think the value of that truck is? Right.
Value is around, looking at the used market, it's gonna be around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty. I'm seeing some trucks go for close to two hundred down in Texas, that's actually smaller than our truck and older than our truck, so.
And that's, I mean, that, one of you guys are looking at there is a couple of years out yet, so. No idea what the market's gonna look like in two years when we go to sell it, but... No idea what the market's gonna look like in two years when we go to sell it, but the hope is that we'll get at least a hundred, a hundred and fifty out of it, that's the hundred and fifty.
How does, does a truck like this better prepare us for like the development that we have with the large apartment buildings and those things?
Uh, yeah, yes and no. I mean, not really no, but in a sense, not, not any different than the one we have now, but I mean, overall, for any, mainly structure fire, but for any call, it's just gonna allow us to operate a lot more efficiently, so.
It's gonna have a bigger pump. You know, obviously, when, you know, like, if up there, a larger truck on probably depends on what it is, we'll have to go in first, but you're gonna need a truck to be pushing water, so with that bigger pump, that just puts us ahead of the game. So when we have to start running water up there.
Is this, will this truck be utilized? Seems like a lot of calls are accident calls as well. Will this truck be utilized for those events?
Yeah, I understood you correctly.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it's like fires, extrications, gas leaks, you know, water rescues, this truck will be the first new truck.
Sure. So when we see all these fire calls, like, how many times will this truck roll on?
Can't get an exact number on that, but um.
If you look at, that's maybe a better question for the chief, but if you look at the, the report from last month, how many times would, does the, the truck that you're replacing roll?
I don't have work calls ever, so I couldn't tell you.
Cause I mean, if you, you know.
Something he's asking.
Kind of cost per mile, you know, that sort of thing.
So our.
Cost per truck roll, I don't know how you, how you should calculate it.
So I don't know necessarily number wise or even percentage wise, but our, our primary, what's gonna roll the most is gonna be our EMS vehicle. That's what the majority of our calls get to be. And then our second most utilized truck would be that engine. It's primarily on all accidents and fires and.
That's this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, got it, okay. I'd say it's probably, it's, depending on the month, it's probably close to half or just a little under. Okay, okay, okay. That's, I'll look at the months and.
Can I, can I ask a question? So we just approved the thirty thousand dollars for the operating. We have an agreement for the building payment. Did we already place the fifty thousand dollars into the equipment fund?
Beginning of the year, but it's, but it's still sitting with the city.
And they have, we have not had a request?
No, no.
So we're just chavvy about the fire truck.
Right, right. We still have those truck funds with us.
Well, and as I mentioned to Bryce, when he called me, part of the reason that we wanted these guys to come in, they just happened to be the first one in the barrel. They can use that for terminology, but that's kind of the truth. This year, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be tightening the screws to everybody that comes and asks us for money. This inflation deal is, is catching us, catching us hard. Everything we touch and do goes up. And we gotta be very cautious with our money and what we're doing. You guys just happened to be, happened to be first. As I also told Bryce, we need the fire department. We're sure as heck not gonna say we don't want a fire department, because if somebody's house is on fire, we sure as heck want you guys to come.
We have a three-story apartment building on fire.
Right. I mean, but we wanna be sure that we're, we give you guys the money, but really have no say over what you do, but we wanna be fiscally responsible, so when the taxpayers are asking us what the hell's going on, we can say to them what's going on. That's part of the reason we wanted you guys to come to that.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I mean, I got a few questions. I mean, why, why this conversation now versus before you bought? Chief Horn reported to us that it'd be around six hundred thousand, I believe, at the time.
Yeah, so uh, I, I believe our original benchmark is six hundred and fifty thousand and uh.
And where are you at now?
Uh, just over eight hundred. It'd be seven ninety if we pay for our chassis upfront, so just under eight hundred. And uh, one of the main thing, or one of the things that was in our recommendations from the board for what this truck should be was the custom cab. So uh, well, once we kinda got into it and started talking with manufacturers and whatnot, it was pretty difficult. It would, it would have been very difficult for us to meet that, if not impossible, from my understanding, for us to meet that six hundred and fifty thousand dollar benchmark for what we had outlined that we were looking for. And mainly that custom cab is a pretty expensive option.
Right.
So that's, and then obviously not to mention the inflation we've all been feeling has really brought things up since we uh, you know, our asset replacement committee kinda decided that we were looking for around a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar engine and that was a year, at least a year, I think, before we had put this committee together. So from the time that was put in and the time it took for us to go through everything, prices took quite a hike.
Well, I realize that, and that's my concern is, once you realize you're over budget, it was just, oh, well, essentially, we're gonna, you know, instead of looking at ways to save costs and, and meet the needs versus once, perhaps, one could argue. Well, you just went forward with it without even consulting the city, saying, hey, we told you six fifty, it's looking more like eight, nine hundred. You know, what consideration was given uh, once you went over the budget, financial impact to the department, cause I see here you have seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in checking, cash assets. And you're gonna buy a truck that's eight hundred.
Yeah, so.
Let me finish. I mean, did you analyze that with your budget?
Yeah.
So you're gonna have money to pay for this if city and townships start getting pinched on their budgets?
If we, so I believe the way it was figured out, I can't cut exactly the whole thing on that, the professional on that, um, but if we do that, if we don't take any increases on our, so if nobody gives us an increase over the next three years, then we'll be okay to afford it because we can pay for our chassis upfront, save us fifteen thousand dollars, which in the grand scheme of things, doesn't make that much of a difference, but so we're, we have seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars right now, but this truck is two years out, so we have two years worth of money that's coming in. So if we budget it properly, it shouldn't be an issue.
Until you need another truck.
Which, uh, according to our asset placement, is not next year or the year after.
I don't, it just.
You need a lot of years.
I don't think you're thinking about it that way. What's your bunker gear toss now it is? Hey, what was it? Year and a half ago?
I don't know that because I wasn't turned a year and a half ago.
Probably close to two. So my point is, everything that you're doing is going up, just like for us and the townships. And so if you maximize your budget, is that being financially responsible? So that's my point. When I think you can do the same job and look at saving costs other places other than cutting your warranty to save money. You guys had two very good stops as a fire department recently, and you did it with a fifteen-year-old plus truck. Not a custom cab, but a commercial cab.
Can I clarify a question? We didn't approve a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
No.
Cause we don't get to a.
Right.
Correct, correct, right. But we, as a council, in the packet, have went from only giving eighty thousand dollars paid for the building to helping supplement their budget, which if they didn't have excess funds maybe from the city, they would have had to figure out how to spend six hundred thousand or six hundred and fifty. So yes, we don't have any say on what you spend your money. That's clear. All we have to say is, if we allocate funds, now, or in the future, and taking all that aside, we might not have funds to allocate. So as a twenty-plus year member, that's chief, twenty-two year professional in the industry, I really think you guys did it a service. I just want that to be known.
I got a financial question. Maybe James might, that seven hundred and fifteen thousand, does that include what's sitting in the city? It does not. And what do we have?
A hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
Is that for a truck or equipment?
That's equipment, correct, right? It's not, it's not earmarked, I don't think, for, right, right. It's equipment slash whatever you wanna call it.
Whatever they want, yeah.
Okay. But that is not in that figure that we see out here.
Yeah, cause it hasn't been turned over to the.
I have a silly question, cause well, I've never been on fire before, I never, what is the purpose of a big generator on a fire truck?
So that is for our light tower and our auxiliary lighting, basically. That's what it's there for, we have.
I'll tell you what generator is a.
Well, that custom cab should already have all what's in it.
No, no, they split it in burner on it.
Those are a lot cheaper.
Sixty-two hundred watt hydroelectric generator.
Sixty-two hundred watt?
Sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two hundred.
I'm just gonna throw out a probably a little bit different vibe here and Mark is, he knows I respect him and I respect his opinion. I also respect the fact that there is a membership or there is a committee, um, that you went through the process, that you did the membership vote, and that the majority of your group believes this was the right thing to do. And as, certainly my professional role, I cannot make any judgment about whether I think this is the right thing or not to do. And so as a councilperson, admittedly, I'm trusting our community in Hartford area, folks that run a fire department, to be, as a group, making those choices. So from my standpoint, I get it. I don't know the details. I don't know about outlets and inverters, but from my perspective, I understand that.
At the end of the day, we have to trust them and be thankful that they're willing to do it.
I'd just follow up on one point. Communication is huge. Cindy's your rep from the council. I'm always available to come and talk to you guys. I think it would probably behoove you occasionally to just say, hey, we're having a meeting to talk about this. And give us a call and have us come. That might, that might alleviate some of this, you know, it's, it's better when we know than when we find out after the fact and it's already done. That's never a good thing.
So. I could equate it to the relationship with the development foundation. And when you open up and make it transparent, you just have a much better understanding of how decisions came to be, where funds are being spent.
Right.
What the real intent is of any thought process and so, yeah, to your point, that communication, right. We're here to be an, an asset, not providing the laws, so to speak.
Right.
And I, I agree with that and some of it is, you know, miningness and the role too and, and understanding where this process, but the one thing I will say is I think it's probably been a very public discussion, um, as far as with amongst the
Sure.
the people involved in the fire department. So yeah, I do think coming to the council's a great idea.
Yeah.
But we approved their budget.
Right.
Months ago.
Right.
If they were sitting in front of me in August asking for that extra money and I knew they were doing this kind of expense, I would not have supported that budget.
The extra two thousand or whatever we increased.
Well, it was eighty, how much did we have to be told?
Fifteen, eighty, fifteen, thirty.
Fifteen, eighty, and thirty, right? Cause eighty were contractually bound.
Eighty worth, that's for the.
On another fifty and thirty, so a hundred and sixty bucks, a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, an additional eighty, fifteen, thirty, right?
And then we give them eighty, then we have.
So a hundred and sixty.
In twenty twenty-three, we gave them twenty-eight thousand operating. This year, we gave them thirty. We gave them forty thousand in equipment. This year, we gave them fifty.
Right.
So an extra twelve thousand dollars from year over year is what we approved.
Yep. So just food for thought, I think that would probably, uh, that would probably go a long, long ways.
Yeah, not a problem. We're not trying to.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Trying to do anything darker or setting, we just kinda.
And you guys have been very good. I know you've been talking to most of us sitting here and uh, that's good, but.
Yeah, we're not looking to, to cause any problems, we just.
As a, as a committee, you know, thinking about how the committee should came here ourselves, I was under the impression that the chief was keeping in contact with you guys and so. I guess in the future, I'll, you know, I'm not really like this, I'll make sure this is gonna do this.
And you know, I've never tried to cram into a fire engine with five other guys. I don't know, Mark probably has. I don't know about anybody else, but that means, I don't, that's where I feel like I need to trust the process and the judgment from your organization, um. But I understand, I mean, it's a big expense and.
And again, and larger communities than us are going to what they're running now versus what they're going to. So other agencies larger than the city Hartford are making that change because of the pricing. They just know that that's a big budget item and the engine can still do the same work to protect lives and property.
There's still a lot of.
And that's where I'm hung up.
There's still a lot of departments going to cut the custom caps. There's a ton of trucks out there that are, that are daily going to custom caps.
I'm just saying. I can't do nothing except keep complaining to you, so. Where, where would a, where would a citizen uh, catch up with the meeting minutes or catch up with what's happening in the fire department other, other than become a member?
Always a question for us, sorry.
So where would a, where would the average citizen find out what's happening in the fire department? We get the monthly reports, uh, which are great. But just meeting minutes, things of that nature, is that's the public information or?
It, it's not public, but if somebody wants to uh, come talk to us, uh, ask, I will provide it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Appreciate you guys coming. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
All right. Last item, I think we have an update on the Summit Pipeline, which you guys will have to be taking care of here too for a second.
Just to throw that out of cheeky ways.
There isn't much to update, just, um, you know, there was a lot of bills that went through legislative session, mainly regards to eminent domain laws or whatever. Nothing actually passed or got changed, um, so just kinda let you know that it's still, I know that, um, Summit is filed a lot of lawsuits against some of the counties or whatever. They're trying to put the, the moratorium on there, so, um, right now, none of that's been decided, but they, they are going through some court actions and in other places besides here, so. I think the timeline is still on track for September for the PUC to make a decision, have their areas to make a decision and that's about all I have for as of now.
This is just a quick aside. I happen to be watching, watching a golf tournament over the weekend and a common ad for Polaro. They're putting a carbon capture pipeline somewhere down in Texas. That's where their headquarters are. headquarters are, yeah, because they were advertising it on the golf tournament, how they're doing all this carbon sequestration. So this is all over the country, from what I can gather, so, anyway. Driven by California. All right, we have no other old business, any reason to go into exact?
Personnel?
Yeah, maybe we should.
Personnel.
Yeah, we'll go into executive session, can I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Second.
All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm gonna motion you during second.
All in favor?
I am.